Wow. Okay. Alright, let's call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Um, can I have a motion to adj- adopt?
I'll make a motion to draft to adopt the agenda.
Thanks.
Really good agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Great, and then we've got the June m-meeting minutes.
I would like to make to make a motion to adopt.
Okay, and a second? Alright, anybody have any corrections, changes, comments?
I've I've corrected Scott Manek's last name.
I just spell it differently now.
Alright, then all in favor? Okay. Um, so no directors report, so we will just move forward. We'll just do the other stuff and new business for them. Um, treasures report, Richard.
Yeah, um, broad view balances, I'm a little confused, uh. I got a email text from Cecilia that we needed made a stance for like sixty-four thousand dollars or something.
Into her personal account, right?
No, I I that was not the request, it was like MR two, is that the name of the contractor?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess she hasn't cut the check yet, or she hasn't had me cleared, because that's why we have seventy-eight thousand dollars in organizational checking.
Yes.
That's why that amount is up there.
I can solve that mystery, so him. Uh, Kim, no, I can solve it. Kim asked her to um, not have the check, business check signed until this meeting, because she wanted the amounts approved by the board, since it's a large amount. So if you wanted that, so the checks are cut, they're just pending your signature after we review the paperwork tonight.
Okay.
So that is that mystery.
Other than that, uh, I also have the uh, monthly uh, budget versus annual on landscapes. I didn't see anything really jump out at me there, um. All the repairs are are separate from this.
Right.
All did all the renovations.
Yes. Yeah, she has a separate spreadsheet going for that. Uh, I think there may have been, where is that, um? There is. I think there was some. There was some question around how um, I think the HVAC stuff got logged. Um, and that may have already been moved. Because at the time, there was not a, the new setup and quick books for which line that was coming out of, so.
Facility repairs, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Yes, and that's, that's only the.
Yeah, I don't.
Three hundred, so it doesn't look like.
Yeah, I don't see it, so it looks like that has been.
Okay.
Moved, so yeah.
That's what we got, and we still have uh, seventy thousand to play with between now and the end of the year. I still haven't zeroed out the 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 one account, the the super count, it's still zero, I haven't.
Any questions on? And what did we decide on CD? Were we gonna look for any CD?
At the time, we just wanted to kind of keep it as liquid as possible, because um. We just wanted to make sure in case there was any hiccups with the reservation, that we had ample funds necessary. Um, that was my understanding, I mean, if you want me to look into CD again, they're only about three and a half, I think, right now. And you can get four months or five months, six months. And then I don't know if they wanna pull stuff out of the project savings account for that, like you did before. I mean, we can certainly look into that. Uh, if you, I mean, if you bought a hundred thousand CD and you got, you know, three and a half percent for four months, you make about two thousand dollars, that's too bad. Better than they could get ahead.
Yeah.
No, I I I understand, I understand that, I mean, it wouldn't be that, it would not be that difficult to move it around, I I get that, I just. You know, with all.
Yeah.
With the, with all the craziness going on, I felt let's just keep it as simple as possible for the time being. Uh, but if, you know, if we decide that, let's go ahead and put a hundred thousand into a CD, I'll be more than happy to go to Broadview and see what they say. The last time I checked, it was three and a half or something, for like a four month or.
And I think Kim looked at this last time, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have it written down, um, cuz the money market was making what?
Money market makes like two point seven five. We're already, you know, getting a good chunk of change out there.
Right, right.
You look at the interest income on the, you know, at the beginning of the, you know, the money margin, we've already made twenty-nine hundred dollars. And just, you know, and just uh.
Yep.
In in terms.
Yep.
So I don't think, you know, that would like. I mean, it would be a little bit more, but on the other hand. Not a whole lot, no, I don't know if it'd be worth it or not.
And you have the liquidity with the money market.
Well, no, I mean, as Scott correctly pointed out, most of CDs now are relatively liquid. They're not, they're, they're not locked in, no, no prepaid. A lot more user friendly than these.
Right.
Everything in one place.
I, you know, I, cuz I know, you know, as we said, we had the HVAC repairs that we put in, and renovations, or we put in like this account. Where it should have been put in the other account, so just to keep it easy for Kim, that she does necessarily, oh, and by we got this, just too many moving parts. Uh, you know, this, in my opinion. I mean, if you wanna look at CDs, I I just think if you're making two point seven five in the big one, let's just write it out, that would be my thing.
Yeah, let's, let's hold off for another.
Yeah.
Month or so when.
A lot more idea of what the renovations are actually gonna come in at.
Right, yeah.
Then we'll have more content on the furniture, et cetera, et cetera, or as revealed, then we realize how much of the best day we can actually move. Yeah, I mean, no, it's a, a good thought, very good point, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I could always always say, can you give me more money, can you give me better rate on the money market, you know, I'm not gonna move it, can you give it more?
So, while we're just talking about renovation, um, I don't remember if the email that was sent was to the whole. Board, but there is a little bit of an update, did people see an update? Not, but um, we'll just, I'll talk about that at the same time, cuz I give us a little bit of an idea of the timing, so um. So the flooring, the carpet flooring production date is August first. They expect to have the carpet the week of August fourth and install it as soon as they have it, it's a one day installation. It's soon, and then once the carpet is down, then they'll have the carpenter back to do the wood base. Um, the light fixtures don't have a firm date, but they're expected mid-August. And that should be a two day installation, including the smoke detector. Um, then they say after the lights aren't installed, the temporary doors will be removed, the space will be cleaned up. There'll be a final walkthrough with the building inspector, um, so. That's the timing for kind of the construction work, and then, let's see if it's in this email, the. Shelving. Delivery date. It's due to ship from Herkimer on September fifth. So, um, I assume it's not a long shipment from Herkimer, but um, you never know. Um. So that's the shelving, and I don't know, I don't think I've seen an update on like the. The furniture and the uh, fabric and all that kinda stuff, so. So it looks like. You know, September, maybe end of September.
Will be pretty well done.
Maybe, yeah, so.
We should do an open house.
Yeah, little, little. Party of.
It could be our cornhole tournament party.
Maybe, yeah. So, I I would assume in the fall, we'll have to close out the grant.
Yeah, I mean, once, you know, then Kim and I can work together with Cecilia to make sure that all the accounting makes sense, that there's a good trail to case anybody. You know, that's, I know that's your major concern, makes perfect sense. Um, I know from accounting standpoints, as things go back and forth to turn accounts, there are dividends and credits that have to be accounted for, et cetera.
Yep.
Um, Patty is, was very helpful in explaining a lot of that.
Yep.
I know Cecilia is a experienced keeper, so I will certainly lean on her expertise. Because I, as far as debit and credits, I think they, I'm not an accountant, they don't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, and we can have Patty kind of review it afterwards.
What happened with the trap door?
Moved it.
They did, okay.
Yeah, I looked in, it was here, and there was no door.
Oh, good, yeah, cuz I know they.
Yes, I was hallucinating.
We'll take a. We'll take a field trip after the meeting. Great, good, yeah, that's great. Um, I don't think we saw any paperwork regarding.
Yeah, I think no one mentioned anything to me.
Okay. Um, so the, the um, bills that we have for payment are. Two months worth, so they, the agreement is billing on a monthly basis, they didn't, the architects didn't forward it to us. Um, it wasn't our delay, I'm just saying. So, I'll, I'll just circulate this all around so everybody can see it, so the first one um, includes. Where is this, um? Includes like the demolition work, doors, hardware, coastal ceiling, some of the painting, flooring. Um, and the other one, and Kim confirmed that all of this is out of grant money, so we confirmed that that was all grant stuff. Um, this has more, says like the, uh, also the dumpster fee. So it's two, two separate months invoices, Kim has approved them. I'll send them around, they're notarized and everything, I guess that's what the delay was, uh, from the architect, so the architects reviewed it, they sent it to us. Um, so I'll circulate these so everybody can review this before Richard signs off. I don't know if we have that, because we're not paying on a percentage basis, right, we're paying a monthly, I think we have to pay it at a monthly basis.
Oh, I would have swapped it, someone would have just like checked this, and where we are in the project in terms of total cost. How much has been invoiced.
So we have.
What, you know.
It says five percent of completed work each, on each bill, was five percent. I'll send, I'll just send, send it around.
And those are the two first bills, so.
Yes.
So that represents.
For MR two, yeah. So we put, you know, the other contractors are paid separately, so John Laporta has been paid. I don't think Mike Kline has been paid yet.
I don't remember.
Okay, yeah, I I think. I'm not sure at this point.
So that means there's eighty percent yet to pay on that.
On the total?
It's it's five, and that's two, the first two.
But then, but the other, like the HVAC, all that is separate, so, um, it's not representing the total amount of the money, yeah.
And the HVAC has already been paid?
Uh, at least two checks for HVAC, I think that was. I think both. Yeah, yeah, I don't know if there's any last work to do, but, yes. So that's what I know for building renovation updates, so.
Yeah, Scott, this does have a continuation sheet that will show you what.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, no, it would be. Where they are at the job. We haven't gotten any extras or anything like that.
No, I don't believe so, yeah.
Which is a little bit expected.
It could get worse.
You poking the bear, let's see what happens.
We haven't been before, fucking.
Alright, so we will uh, move on to fundraising.
Okay, um, there's no report, but I circulated this little piece of Facebook. Uh, post that I designed, which covers a lot of the things that we would wanna talk about. Uh, so one of the um, things is that Kim was able to get this band Narrow North to agree to do a two hour live. Performance for us rather than the three, which was coming in at three fifty or two fifty. Um, so that's, you know, saving was, and I think three hours is kind of too much, for, cuz we're thinking twelve to three, right? So the music will be one to three, and they're a mandolin, stand-up bass and guitar band, which sounds really kinda cool. There's bluegrass slash roots music kinda thing, um, so we're locked in with that, um. The thing that I want to propose, cuz we were talking about doing a uh, cornhole tournament. But when I read through this information about cornhole tournaments and the various ways you could run them, and it sounded rather complicated. Um, which is fine, but it seems like we have an awful lot of moving parts for this day, as if, as we're doing. Uh, summer reading, end of, enders of summer reading, where we have new residents coming in to do a tour of the library and meet uh. People and hopefully have the other um, sister organizations come in and tell them a little bit about. Like the historical society and the food campaign and things like that, as we have in the past, so there's that, there's the music. There's uh, hot dogs, hamburgers, lemonade, Ari, you're doing, you're doing the lemonade. Uh, so it seems like a lot, but I thought we could have cornhole. Boards, or whatever they're called, and um, and just have people play informally and ask people if they would be interested in a tournament. Get their, their names, get their.
Organize themselves while they're playing. They're like a self-organized.
Now, we'll, we'll do it, we'll just do it later.
They're doing one at the uh, the new firehouse in eleven.
Oh, they are, oh, maybe I'll go and.
Saturday, I wanna say at ten, it's like a lead gentleman, it's a fundraiser for the Legion. And I don't know if they hired, there's a guy that you hire to do it, and you could, you pay you like, you pay him five hundred bucks or something.
Well, that we're not doing.
Well, I. I that, I agree totally, it's like, no, we're not doing that, but he's, he, he, I just showed ornithology.
Yeah.
And it might be interesting to see how it looks.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
I did see a sign on twenty today that it looked like this weekend at ten o'clock, they're doing ornithology tournament at the new firehouse, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't think it's in Shepherd Park. Um, you might wanna do a little quick research on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz I was gonna swing by just to look at, see what it's all about, to get a feel for it, you know.
Yeah, that's great.
People who do the tournaments, I know, are very cutthroat serious about their, their tournaments.
Yeah, you wanna do it right, I mean, the, the things are supposed to be twenty-seven.
Excited about it, then I don't know if I wanna give them, they can be really awesome. If you run it to, if you run it to be a fun event, you know, family friendly, et cetera, it's, it's a whole different animal than these professional ones, that, you know.
Right, so I think we want something probably in between, because we do want people to pay to.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's paid in the pot, so to speak, and whatnot, you know, ten, but. Yeah, I, I, I feel it, I feel like. You can have like a kids, a kids section, I mean, there's all sorts of different ways, just to kinda keep it calm.
Yeah, but, but some, my proposal is as far as this event on August twenty-third.
Cornhole rose, so everybody was then walking from every other. Because there was no parking there, and it, it, they had a tent up at the end, and it was complete. You could not walk between them, they were that close together, and it was just from the street all the way to the back. Wow. If we're gonna do it, we have to advertise it more as like a family-friendly cornhole. Because otherwise, you're gonna get a crowd, it's more like the bar. Tournament crowd, you know, like.
And they're gonna be pissed if it's not done exactly.
You know.
Well, it's on TV, I've watched people.
It's become a thing.
Yeah.
It's at every event you go to that's outside, even, uh, I went to a wedding that had it. And the Jenga, everybody else.
So the downside for us is we were gonna be able to charge money to um, sign up for the tournament, and we will not do that, so we'll just. So this is now gonna say, dry your hand at, and get rid of tournament.
Yeah, which is one word, it comes up.
Is it?
Oh, into your art now.
I dislike the look of it.
I could, I could, I could not agree more, it, it is what it is. Have to speak to the Cornhole Federation. I, I'm sure there is one.
I will, I will.
Yeah, it says ACL official game rules, in the, in the.
No, I know, I know.
Well, it's not that, we didn't mean that corner.
Yeah, it's a different kind.
We wish, uh, we just got track ten over there, see if we can get in there.
Yeah. I, I agree with that, but we couldn't say, like, I actually couldn't see it when it said that she, you changed it before I saw. Cuz this is the only one I saw, but we could say, like, proceeds go to the library, or proceeds support the library, something, just so people. It says it's for sale, but maybe having it be, it doesn't emphasize fundraiser.
Right, but yeah, I think that's a good, yeah, yeah.
So just say lemonade period proceeds go to the library?
I mean, I just think, cuz we had talked about if there were, I guess I was thinking there was this cornhole thing too, when I was thinking about this, but. More like at the bottom, it'd be like any proceeds go to the library.
Okay.
Just take off the.
Not necessarily attached to the lemonade, hot dog thing, but just any money we need.
Gotcha, okay.
We can even put a donation then out, some people just.
Right, yeah, yeah.
They don't wanna play, they don't wanna buy food, but they'll donate. It may come to, yeah, support everything.
Yeah, I hope that your lemonade says as well as Carly Neat's son's lemonade, because he basically is ready to pay for his college education. From like two weekends of lemonade, yeah, but he is awfully cute, and I'm not saying you're not cute, Ari, but I'm just saying. Yeah, he was raking it in. Yeah, maybe we can, yeah.
So the way we're making money is with the food, hot dogs, hamburgers, salads, um. I, I think that uh, Mary Ann's intention is to go to that same place to buy the food. Uh, and maybe you, you can get pre-made salads, potato salad, or something like that, um. And the lemonade, and then we'll have a fifty-fifty raffle, and we can, Mary Ann was talking about baskets that aren't. The, um, the type of baskets that we did at.
Like not local stuff, but just baskets.
Just baskets of stuff that people, I, I, I wasn't completely clear on what was the fewest of this. But we will find out.
Okay.
Um, but there's always the issue of weather, so how many people have pop-up tents, does anybody have pop-up tents?
Have access to one. It can't be tubs and.
One, okay, I think that Mary Ann has one.
I, my in-laws have one, that's pretty big in law, but like. But yes, I, I.
You have mine.
Mm-hmm, I do.
You do? So, four people, Jen, Mary Ann.
Is, is there a suggestion that this is now telling him with the open house that was just suggested?
Yeah, too early.
This is tied in more to the uh, summer reading.
Into summer reading.
Yeah, we, we normally have a new resident thing in July, we thought we'd push it back and, and sort of.
Yeah.
Along things together as much as we could, but I think the, the tournament is too much of a glog.
Do you wanna do corn?
Yeah, that would be good. Corn on the cob?
Just a corn tournament.
Continue to shove it, and then you put it, pour hot water in the pool, and let it sit thirty minutes, and it cooks, in a, like, in a pool.
Oh, alright, I like it.
It's, it's great, and it's so good. It is delicious, I didn't think I was okay, and then I tried it.
We could probably, I mean, I bet Larry might. Yeah. Yeah.
And that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think that's a nice, yeah.
Okay, so there's very little time really between now. Lots of people are going on vacation, myself included, so I just wanna make sure that we have. Uh, I know that Vinnie and Mary Ann are planning to handle most of the food, the, the corn. I don't know about the lemonade, do you?
Can you get Edgar to someone to go make the corn, cuz it's not.
I'm sure we can, yeah.
Do you know them well?
I, I know Larry somewhat, yeah, yeah, uh, do you want me to?
I know the kids that work there, I don't know that. I haven't seen Larry since I was a kid myself, so I don't think he does. Um, but we.
How much are we thinking? How many, how many years or? Is it? On half, yeah.
I mean, uh.
I mean, they have huge schools here, I mean.
Is there a bushel?
No, don't give me packs and bushels, I know I hear.
I, it took, uh, how many people do we think?
Yeah, it's the body part.
Well. You don't know.
I'd say, you're saying, you say, that the cooler corn takes half an hour from cradle to grave, so to speak. All that snarkiness is coming out tonight, okay, but no, I mean, the question is if you had like. You put half of this ahead of it, I mean, if you don't run out, and, you know, some of us would buy it all.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we would buy it off of you. So we would buy it off of you for, you know, whatever.
I think that we had approximately, and this is just a number in my head, and I could be wrong, around fifty people at the last new resident. Um, and this is new resident, plus it's the summer reading, so there will be families still lingering, who might be interested in seeing the music, which is free to them. At one o'clock, so that means more than the fifty, plus we have, are selling food and lemonade, which is more than we normally do. So I'm, I'm thinking, we might get to eighty, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
So I would say if we had sixty years of corn, it's probably a half, that would. That would be more than, cuz some kids will want a couple little ones, you know, it's all on how much we wanna sell them for. You know, cuz if you're half, if they're half years, you probably get less per.
Right.
You know, whatever.
Okay.
So we'll figure it out.
So, Mary Ann, Ari, Ari's in was, is that two tents or one?
It's one tent.
Okay, then Jen's got a ten, and there was somebody else, oh, and you got, you got me.
So it's not a tent.
Okay, alright, so that will always be a four coverings, in case we have.
Um, what do we need, um, is somebody supplying a grill?
Um, I think that Mary Ann and Vinnie already had a plan around that, I'm pretty sure of that, because she says he grills all the time, and he loves a grill, and he's like the grill. So I think a grill comes.
One for you, Vinnie with a grill.
Um, Toby and I would be happy to kind of monitor the cornhole action and, and, um, play with people and, and find out if they're interested in. Doing a tournament and getting their input on that, and we can think about where, where we would do that. Because that seems like that is pretty weather dependent, unless we had enough space indoors and we don't care.
That would be something during the fall, if you like hot cider.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for this fall, I, I, we were always talking about the harvest thing, yeah. Yeah.
Chili.
Yeah, chili and that.
Um, I like it. So, do we need to have a um, another meeting to bang out any final details on this? Yeah, and then, and then what about?
This week we can do it, cuz I'm going away, although I'm only away for like four days, so I'm back, but it just feels like it's. Uh, yeah, so, so I'll coordinate with Mary Ann, who will set up a meeting, and maybe two meetings, um.
And then, um, does Narrow North have a following, their own?
I believe they do, I know that. I believe they do, I know that.
Good point, what if people come?
Yeah, to see them, yeah.
I think they, I think they, I I know that they were playing at the Beer Diviner, that's where Kim saw them, and I think it was really popular, and she said they're really good. Um and I looked at their website and they they sound like real bona fide.
Cause maybe we can ask them to. To promote the event too, if they've got people. Okay, so what else do we need? And then mailing the new residents.
Yes, and so I was, I had a question about that, do you think we need to actually do a mailing? Or can we just put a flyer with all the deeds in there? Which would save us.
I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't do that, but that's illegal.
Oh, it is?
One, yes.
I did not know that.
I think we need to mail, and I think we could probably do the flyer, but also a letter.
A letter and a flyer.
Yeah, I think the letter and a flyer.
Okay, and.
Or, you know, just so that's more, cause this.
So there must be somewhere in the files, the letter from last time that went to the.
It's a good question, and cause I I I think we did, but now I don't know.
Well, you sent something, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we just sent a flyer though, because it was more new resident, new res, you know, specific. But we'll we'll get, I can work with you on something if you want, um and then. Okay, and then the other thing is then what about reaching out to the other organizations?
Yeah, I can get, I can send the email out to everybody and tell them we're doing another new resident, plus other things are going on. But would they be willing to come? It seemed like, I know that um. The um historical society seemed to really get a lot of benefit out of it, they thought it did well for them, and it seemed like there was some other group that was really.
Food pantry did well last time, yeah, yeah. Do we want to, like, are we saying like have tables or is it more casual this time? Like, are there gonna be tables in here for them to have their stuff?
What do you think's better?
I think probably they might want a table, you know, um somewhere.
So we'll figure out how many people are gonna do, I mean, how many organizations will do it?
We used to have them just bring all their own stuff, put their own table, bring their own tents, and there was gonna be a spot outside.
I mean, if they wanna bring a tent, cause they wanna be outside, I think that's a good idea to ask them to bring that, we probably have enough.
We usually never had enough stuff to give things to other organizations, cause we're using a big hat, so we use it simply.
Yeah, you know, I don't know this time if they will or not, but.
Yeah, I mean, we always had them set up in inside and it went fine, the only time it didn't go fine was when people were really in the back and felt like they. Nobody came to see them, like they can get up and walk around, and we can urge them to do so.
And there we go, go.
Are we um for, are we gonna encourage people to like bring chairs and picnic blankets and stuff like that? Should we say something about that? Cause people are gonna be.
Yes, since there's no big tents.
Cause we have.
Well, we do have the picnic tables that we can use, right?
Yeah, but we're probably like down to.
Six, seven?
I was gonna say five or six.
Yeah, then we should um end in that case, think like, well, these tables too.
Yep, good points.
Well, I don't know about picnic baskets, cause we don't want them bringing their own food and not eating our food.
Not picnic baskets, picnic blankets.
Blanket, bring a chair, blanket.
Lawn chair, yeah.
Pretend you're going to tangle one. Then you just go to Steve.
Oh, that's what we should, that's what we should. Yeah, yeah. Red redneck tangle one, redneck tangle, who's who's on, who's with me, no?
Country, a country.
Country tangle.
Eight thousand people.
Eight thousand people?
All the trailer parks in the area totally empty. You're all, it's all in limited value.
Whenever it's a valley that was the longest night so far. It's the longest date of our commission.
All right, anything else on?
Um yeah, I think the only thing is maybe we need to um see if there are board members who are willing to do the indoor stuff with the new residents and focus there. Versus the outdoor stuff, looking the cornhole and all that, so if there's anybody that likes meeting and greeting.
I'll be happy to help on the twenty seven. My schedule should be pretty clear.
Do we also wanna do watermelon?
Yeah, that's easy and.
That's a good question.
I'm just, I'm mostly kidding. I get really upset when I get a.
You can tell if it's bad, so we won't get, we won't sell it to people.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not, sorry, guys.
It sounds like you've had some trauma. We'll hold space for you, Ari, your watermelon troubles.
Isn't there a group for those?
Okay, so when you're baking lemonade, not everybody's gonna drink a lemonade, so we also need to have like.
Some beverages. I I'm I'm willing to, I'm willing to do that.
What you're doing, water or soda?
Is it the same day as the end of summer reading? Cause they usually do a Sunday party and stuff like that.
They're doing it differently.
No, aren't they still doing the ice cream?
They're doing the ice cream thing, they're doing some paintings outside, but it's on that day.
But the Sunday thing is, I think.
But that's for the kids. They're doing the celebration before we start our thing, right? Are they doing it like eleven to twelve?
They're doing an eleven to twelve, but they'll still be here.
They'll be ruining their appetite by eating Sunday, yes, yes.
But it's just the kids' appetite, the parents. All right, well, I mean, there's obviously some things to work out, but if anybody has ideas about how they'd like to pitch in and. Something that they'd like to do that hasn't been mentioned, please send an email to me or Mary Ann or both of us or all of us actually on the committee, including Ari and Liz. The committee.
All right. Thank you, committee. Um, okay, moving on to four fourteen.
We submitted the big kitchen. At a receipt. Um I got an email Stephanie to. In connection with an inquiry I made a month ago. About what she was looking for in connection with budget. Because I told her in my email that we were going to. Submit a preliminary budget for next year, uh using the assumption that we would get to fill fourteen. Uh additional funding. So I got a very bizarro email today saying you shouldn't. Budget for the anticipated addition. Cause you should, you don't do that in budget. To which I was thinking, a budget is the anticipated revenue and expenses for the following year. So why do that, would you not include the fifteen thousand dollars? And what utility would it be in terms of a disclosure to submit a budget which didn't include fifteen? But those were the things I was keeping to myself, as I was reading this going, she doesn't know what she's talking about.
Oh, my first budget.
So in any event, I. Look troubled.
Oh, I'm just puzzled, I'm thinking.
So I sent the email over to OSC, to Logan in OSC. At uh the government school district uh section, and he goes, I don't know what she's talking about. And he sent me some information, um which I'll take a look at. Um I'll try to figure out.
Do you, I mean, was there a question about? We are anticipating that we should be showing that we're anticipating this amount of expenses, but not. Presume in the revenue or something?
Don't ask me to. This is what I got. I'll read it with enthusiasm and feeling. Well, not if I can't get it, not, I mean essentially.
Yes, she didn't specify a specific area that was incorrect.
Which also presented issues, but what she ended up saying is that the trustees should think about expenses, and that was all she said. So I don't know what she's talking about, but I'll get the information. I think we prepare a budget with the assumption of that, I mean, what we could do, which is actually an interesting exercise.
Get it in the current and show how much of a debit you. That might be what she's looking.
It's not the way people budget.
I'm I'm aware of that, that's more of a forecast.
You have to look at changes you're gonna make, get it, cause you're saying we're gonna have to make cuts.
And what OSC said, what OSC said, which made perfect sense, was. I don't know what she's talking about. When you do this, and he actually gave me a formula which they use, then he had to took it for me. Because it made no sense to me, but he essentially said, yeah, you budget assuming that you'll get the money. And then in the event that you don't, then you amend your preliminary budget, which. Which seems sane to me. But and but in any event, it occurred to me that you could.
Yeah, I mean.
Wanted to just do it.
If you wanted to show how much it was, how much it was needed.
You you could show.
You could show or propose with even with some increase, cause that's what we'd like to do, I mean, salary wage increases are something that we pretty much. Yeah, and just, and you say, okay, fine, this is what we've got with the ninety-five, this is what we've got with the one tent. And you know, I mean, you could do that.
I.
It strikes me as not what a budget is, I.
And the real question is, she's thinking that people are going to take a look at this and going to be informed by it. And that's not what's going to happen. That she's going to send it to the Board of Elections. Which is also incorrect. So I'm gonna do a little work and we'll figure it out, I think we should finish the budget.
Yeah, go ahead, go through it.
And go through it and figure out what we'll submit to her.
Was Stephanie involved the last go round?
Yeah, probably.
And do you know what was?
We didn't, we just spent eight. And I don't think we have an obligation to submit any, now, as a matter, I mean, basically, I spoke to the controller's office and. And both of them said. You submit the petition, submit your resolutions, that's what goes and that's gets transmitted.
We we had a board liaison for that too, they assigned one of the town board members to come to, come to all of our meetings. Come to the board meetings and all that kinda stuff to follow our progress, our planning for it, so we had a, we had a, we had board eyes on us. All the time last time, while we were.
So I think Kim never sent feedback, correct, on the initial, on the email thread going around with the budget?
No, I mean, no, she's, you know, there was some, you said some kickback about we were not gonna do a flat six percent on this. Whatever, that's why I brought copies tonight, that we can go through if you wanna take the time or maybe set up a separate meeting. Just to go through line by line, what do you wanna see? I mean, that that makes, that made the most sense to me, I have this now on a spreadsheet, so. Once we come up with that, I can then feed it into the spreadsheet and.
I think we should try to do that um with with Kim.
The program costs, etc., the, you know, all that kinda stuff is much more in her bellywood too than.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think if we can do that, um a small four fourteen meeting next week.
Because this is, to me, this is the best way to do it, you just go through the pen.
Yeah, I mean, my sense was we'll decrease the amount allotted to the uh. Uh salaries. Rather than assuming a six percent.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think we need to do it specifically with what they were, you know.
Now, that number is gonna change, I don't think the other numbers change all that much, I mean, sort of like. We know what our expenses are, we're making general assumptions, there aren't that many moving parts, and to the extent that there's. Uh a factor, a sort of a slush factor, you're probably gonna throw that into anticipated maintenance. Because basically you've covered it, you're not gonna say, but we're gonna hold a certain amount for reserve, you just can make an assumption.
Right, yeah, I mean, we have a lot of deferred maintenance right now.
You know, it's sort of, we've been deferring maintenance, so that struck me as the most sensible way. Oh, but it's fine. I mean, I need to, I need to go through the OSC stuff and see what they're talking about. It's just that. I'm disinclined to, I mean. I don't really, it doesn't get.
Yeah.
Um no one's gonna look at it, it's really nothing, I, you know, we'll just figure it out, I just, I think it's unfortunate. Because she's creating issues that she exists. And she's telling the town that they haven't done X, Y, and Z.
Right, yeah.
And she's wrong about that, and she's uninformed. I mean, she's basing it on something, but what she's basing it on is the same process, though it's just sort of frustrating.
The scary part is if whenever you give her, she'll probably reject. That's that's the feeling, I guess.
She doesn't have the discretion. Sort of like very frustrating about it, they're basically a conduit for this, you submit the stuff and they're supposed to send it on. And were they to hold it, I mean, we've got plenty of time.
Yeah, I understand.
Were within sort of the time parameters, were they to hold it up? That would be a problem, and to hold it up for a budget, which we have an obligation to give. So my attitude is give her something and then so, so it's take care of it next week.
So I'm I'm away next week, Monday is the town board meeting, um and usually Kim and I go or one of us goes, so I don't know if she'll be. Feeling well enough to attend, but if not, I don't know if you have time Monday, seven o'clock. Might be just an opportunity to, in front of whole board, to just give a little, like the update of something too, so that they're aware.
Yeah, I can move that.
Yes, it's coming Monday, yeah.
This is probably Wednesday workshop.
They don't really do them anymore, they do them ad hoc. So.
They outsend her?
Um like, I I think they announce them at the board meeting if they are gonna need one, but.
For the next one?
Right, they would say like the next, yeah, like we'll we'll need one or something, but.
And by Monday I should, and tomorrow I should have.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for doing that, yeah, I know this has been.
It's just, yeah, it's sort of interesting.
So I think then the next thing we're gonna have to focus on, once we sort of feel secure that this is going through and we're, we'll be on the ballot and all that, is. Really honing in on the messaging, um and the um. You know, not just the the talking points, but then how how else are we going to communicate to people, are we gonna put out some? The annual report style infographics, so people are aware of, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing, all that kinda stuff, right?
Cause I have a fact sheet, I think that's sort of ready to go and.
Right.
File what we filed, I've uh.
If we're happy with the language.
Are we ready to send it out?
I like what we did, what.
I mean, timing wise, are we ready, like, do we wait for?
Budget is, now I'm just being cranky. Yeah, I mean, basically, it is my view that we have satisfied our legal obligations. They've got an obligation to turn it over to the Board of Elections. We'll figure out how to.
So we don't think there's any possibility that it, well, there's a problem.
There's always a possibility, I mean, I'm getting, you know, ashamed of Stephanie about how we're miscreants and haven't done what we're.
Maybe a little.
I mean, for our managers. Well, I just say, it's for like, you've had this obligation, I go, no, it's gross.
If you wanna wait till the brawl on Monday night to send out the email, you can't.
I'll be civil.
Uh, but otherwise, that'll be good to go.
It was just. And then I'll be quiet. It was just, I'm sorry it took so long to respond. It's been over a month. But I didn't look at my trash folder or junk mail folder.
Where your emails go.
Everything else went to her, so I'm not sure why this.
All right, well, we'll get through and then after Monday and then we'll see where we, we are, I'm gonna be away anyway, so we'll send it after that. Okay. Anything else on that we wanna talk tonight for fourteen?
Uh, do you have, do you have a sense of the mechanism of of that? Like, last time you said you were, Kim, we're gonna, like, can we set this up? List, you were just gonna do it through normal library channels?
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out what what you give people next.
Uh, so I think that is, I think then it's like, what what else do, what else? How else do we want to communicate this in terms of the soft messaging around? Why it's important to support the library, why, you know, it would be great, so people understand what we're doing, understand. The value that we are adding to the community, that kind of messaging, I think. So some of those um examples from, I forget which library it was now, but uh.
Infographics.
Yeah, the infographics, you know, hey, this many programs and, you know, this many. Card holders and this many programs for kids and tho- those kinds of things that just.
Time.
Yeah, 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 then the increases and that, just so we have ways to, um.
And because of the wording and our experience doing this before, you think it's okay to just the regular library channels to be sending information out as the main. Conduit for what we're doing.
Actual information is gonna be fine.
But we only need to set up a separate channel where we just do fourteen marketing and messaging on its own.
If we're gonna do the usual. I'm gonna do marketing.
Well, that's the word you guys use, but.
I don't use the word.
We're we're not doing any um advocacy for it. We're just.
It's just, we file the petition.
Yeah.
This is what.
Right, yeah, this is what you can expect to see. And then the other stuff is really just what we might do anyway. It's just that we want to make sure that we are.
Okay.
Doing it to, I don't even think it necessarily needs to reference. The four fourteen. To just be starting soon to have a pulse of information. Going out in the different areas through our email, like when we send an email, we have some of this information in there. When we do Facebook, we have some of those things that are just keeping people.
Right.
Um, aware of the.
Well, what more than you currently?
Say that again?
What more than we are currently doing with this? I mean, send out what we do on a monthly basis or coming out of the library, I mean.
Uh, more of like the.
Not to scream, I'm just asking.
Cause we didn't do, we didn't do the annual report thing this year, the mailing to people, um, which we did last year, that Deborah had suggested. Um, so I'm thinking more of like having something like that and then parcelling out that information.
Snackables, yes.
Snackables, yes, and snackable segments, um, just so we keep kind of a more.
We also talked about maybe having a link and an email to the website or having having like a. A section of the website that they came to this where it's all just there, whatever you wanna show people is up there and you, for more information. On this, it gives you around the advocacy part and all the other stuff where you're not saying, you just, like, for everything else, check out the website and just, and you're not saying, you're saying, absolutely.
Like a financial work list that we connect back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, okay.
But if you just, you could post the, you know, the annual report stuff that you didn't send out or any gra- the graphics you normally do once a year with all the stuff and how that if you wanna put that budget up there, you know. You do want people to see it, cause you've gone through the work of putting it together.
Yep.
Or the other one.
Be there and then.
Or both.
One.
Here's a disaster scenario.
Yeah.
It will be closed if it's open up there.
Right, cause I do think we need to, actually, that is actually the other messaging and and plan that we need to. Not just the messaging, it's the plan we need to come up with is, is what 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 are the, what are the pets if we do not get this, so.
Yeah, the upside.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can, um, if we're, there's still gonna be meetings, so we could talk about strategy about bringing that to the. Work other than. Okay.
Good. All right, anything else for fourteen related? Okay, new business?
Um, the librarian ordered me to share that they're expecting an incoming donation in memory of. Uh, individual that passed to go specifically to the children's room construction contribution.
That's wonderful news.
So, yeah, I'm not sure, there there was no timeline listed, so, um, it's in the copy.
Yep. Awesome.
And I don't know if it's possible to renew the world, but anybody that can come help, you know, distribution, it definitely requires two people. In the morning or in the afternoon.
Nothing does it.
Sign up.
They're doing all the Thursdays, okay.
I signed up, have people, I signed up for some distributions. No, I know, I guess.
I know, uh. The library, okay, but I can't, yeah, yeah, and I'll sign up for more if I can, but.
Yeah.
I have told Kim that I'm available until I'm not, um, as far as I know, going forward, I'll do them, um, but I wanted other people to have. Options to jump in, cause I have more availability to kind of just hop over after it's, um.
Thanks for doing so much on this, Liz. I know this has turned out to be more than anybody has anticipated and it's. We also caused some logistical issues with overlaps of program. I mean, this room is doing. Quadruple duty at this point and it's kind of beyond capacity of, um, you know, we're we're struggling to be able to. Have programs, let alone have a few children's room, let alone now it's a food distribution site, um, so.
The the receptivity of the families that are receiving the food is very, it's very good, you know, they're very grateful and. And happy to have the food. And most of the families are very consistent with either informing us that they can't make it or incoming to get it, so, you know. It's, it's good.
It sounds like it's like a a solid two hours at least in the mornings.
It is typically a solid two hours, um, by the time you get counted and prepack the breakfast materials. And then in the afternoon, um, because of the refrigeration cold, um, you can't. Prepack anything till people arrive.
Uh-huh.
Um, the state is expected to come out at some point to inspect, um, within the window of now till the end of the program. And so they're very specific about the temperature regulation. It seemed to work well today, but it was a cooler day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, than some of the other days have been. So there's, there's that, um.
Yes.
So.
Check the temperature.
We we have thermometers, but what they do, so we have the thermometers that that tell us the temperature of the coolers, but what they do is they come in and actually probe the food. And so if the internal, uh, essentially what the the situation is, is they come in and probe anything that they choose to probe. If it's less than the temperature of expectation, they throw it all out.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, it it is, it's contained, so, and and I understand just their parameters, it's just a matter of making sure that we can keep that stuff.
Is it delivered? The food's delivered that morning? And what time is it delivered?
I'm sorry.
What time?
Ten, ten thirty. Anywhere between, anywhere between ten o'clock and eleven o'clock.
And.
At this point, and that's.
Contributed by.
Four to six.
What is it?
Four to six, right?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's taken out of the cooler's one? There are reasons why I'm asking the question.
Comes out of the pool between four and six, whenever people arrive. Some families.
Problem with temperature, if you're at temperature and you're coolers.
So when the food was delivered today, it was right at the border of temperature. He probed something out in the yard and it was. At the, at the height of what it could be. So now we're trying to cool it down to be lower than the height of what it can be. So I know that, and that's something that Kim and I can work with, the Debbie and Fiona, one is making sure that. The distribution center is doing better with keeping their product.
Mm-hmm.
At at temperature, cause if we get it and it's already kind of creeping up, now we're trying to cool it back down. Um, so, and I know that they're trying to work logistics with with everybody, so it's. It's a work in progress. This is the first year that they've done this to this length across Shredzak.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And and it's, you know, it's proving to work out all the logistics of it.
Right, yeah.
You know, um.
So at least two hours in the morning, at least two hours in the afternoon and plus, you know, so, and then, and and for two people. Um, two days a week. That's a significant number of volunteer hours that are being required and part of that right now. Like Kim was using, I mean, she was doing some of her time for this. This is something I think we need to. I mean, I don't know what'll happen next year anyway, but I think we need to revisit this. I'm not sure that this is something that is a great fit for the library, um.
The problem is, so. I know somebody suggested the the food pantry. The problem is it has to be a dedicated. Um, refrigeration center, so like, the food pantry rents the space from federated towers, it's not a dedicated space. And that is why we are allowed to do it here because it's a dedicated space. Um, they had to go and approve, if we have spillover, they had to go and look at for fat bowel as an approval. They've approved it, but then we're trucking things back and forth, um. And that's the the thing, is it needs to be dedicated site, which can get tricky with some of the other locations around the community that would, that would be a distribution.
Yeah, I mean, and I know, I know, I know it's difficult to work with the fire department on the hall, but they've got like huge refrigerators.
But they're already doing the camp, and so it's crossover.
Why would it be crossover?
I mean, campus store and on that site. Uh, from what I've been told, and I don't know, that's something we can check in again with Debbie and and Fiona, but from what I've. I'm understanding is during the time that camp is running. Because it's running at that location, that would be two sites trying to run at the same time. They have a different distribution schedule than we do, so it. It is really hard to understand it in and of itself.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't understand the dedicated thing, um, be because it's not the. The the refrigerators are not part of a food pantry proper space, that it's the church. I don't get that, cause.
Right, the food pantry, cause the food pantry rents the space from the church for specifically Saturday morning.
Both of them, the church, it's a food pantry for a couple hours a week.
Yeah, but we don't really rent it and they, yeah, they just allow it and, yeah, so.
All the time.
Right, what's left there, rice is what you're bringing in as a dedicated. Exactly, so this refrigerator is right now dedicated completely to.
Huh, that's the only thing that goes in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, you can't get somebody else's lunch or somebody, the food pantry's whole cheese or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I get it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah.
There i- it's very.
Yeah. Well.
My type is.
Yeah, just think we need to think about that, uh, cause we're also asking staff to do stuff that, um. We're we're in an awkward position with the staff as well, with some of the stuff, um, so. Just wanna.
I know that Kim. Was supposed to do more than obviously she's been able to do right now, cause so, you know, there's that balance, and I don't mind coming in and helping when I can, um.
And and don't, I I'm always, don't take this the wrong way, but I don't necessarily want to pay Kim to. Or to run a food organization, you know, I don't necessarily wanna to do, like. We're trying to free up her hours to do other stuff, to have her spending two hours in the morning, packing lunches is not really what. Seems to be a great use of time, so.
Think, and she's not here to speak, but in conversations that I've had, I think. This was the program that she's been running for years in food distribution.
Right, yeah.
And the county changed the way that they're doing it.
No, no, definitely.
Have a choice, but if we wanted to participate in donating and giving out food over the summer.
Right.
That this was the only way to be able to do it.
Yeah.
And I I think she didn't anticipate the the demand either.
Correct.
Yeah, 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 understood. And and it's, I'm so glad that we're, you know, we're able to help the community this way. I just, yeah. If if this, yeah, this is, yeah, we just need to.
It may need to be dedicated to.
Town used to pay her to take out a lot, cause we got all the money, did it with Ken, so. All the money we got from the town went to all the, no, I still can't, and then the extra stuff.
Right. And that, what that has been in the past too, like a way for families to get food is through camp.
Right, but now you can, anybody can, they don't have to be at the camp.
He doesn't say anybody, and they have specific sites, the other sites are Berlin and Petersburg and Gravit, so like they're distance away. Like, we have a few families from Wyden still, we have a few families coming up from.
Wyden's go, wow.
Yeah, um, but they're having a hardship to come out, cause it's twenty five minutes for some of them to get over here, so. It's a little tricky. We've got Eagle Park families, we've got Lebanon families, we have families from.
I can't believe people are coming from Wyden still. They don't have anything closer in that area?
No, and that's, and that's the trick is like. You know, um, where they can pick up the the food.
Yeah, wow.
And when.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it may be something that if we are gonna move forward with, that somebody needs to kind of volunteer to take it over.
Right, yeah.
For the summer instead of just falling onto the library staff.
Agreed, I think that would be a good way to do it, like.
And we could, you know, if we know that that's how we're gonna do it going forward, we can advertise.
Right, get that, yeah.
Maybe get somebody to take that on.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, so. No, that sounds great. And thank you for stepping in as much as you have been, so. Um, and then you wanted to see about getting a fan for.
Oh, yeah, I know. And and so on top of that, being in here, um, we would like to petition to get some sort of a oscillating fan, um, in this room.
I have a standing oscillating fan in in my house that I don't think we need. I mean, I'd want it back, but we could certainly bring it for this period of time.
This is a construction issue? But there's no, there's no air conditioning in here.
There's air conditioning, it's just that there, I think because it's so, so much activity going on, that it's just not cooling.
When she had the, we had the little party in here, the gloomy party on Saturday, and it was a hot day, and it was like. Like, I, I came in, I was in here for maybe ten minutes, and I had to step away and go another room. Maybe need to just clean off.
It's not cause they're replacing, in the process of replacing.
No.
I don't think so, no.
And there's certain, well, replacement stuff that's that issue or.
Uh, that, it's just the splits out there, so it just didn't address anything in here.
I think part of it is that people coming in and out are allowing that warm air to circulate, and then we also have the attic, once this door opens. Like, if you're getting supplies out and things like that, that attic air is coming, so it's just. A fan moving the air is gonna maybe help just kind of keep it cooler in here.
Um, it's not small, but you know, but I'm happy to bring it over.
I would also be fine if people wanna talk about just approving, if Liz, if you wanna purchase. A fan that you think would be appropriate up to whatever, this, I don't know what fans cost, um. Up to a certain amount, I think people, I mean, Kim would do that if she was available, so I think that would be. Fine to do as well. I mean, I see how hard you guys are also working on these distribution things, like you're building up a sweat, like. And and anything to keep the fan.
Yeah, or like, it'd be great to have, at least until we can get one, cause sometimes whoever takes off, so, that would be, that would be kind of nothing. Appreciate it.
I'm not giving up my fan.
Yeah, no, I get it. Don't forget it. Movement of air.
Okay, any other new business, any other old?
Selena asked me, I would sell pottery and, you know, on the weekend before, the great corn hole. Extravaganza.
Exposition.
Um, I said we. We're delaying our trip to Cape Cod, but also.
That's very. Oh, okay, well, that's very.
That, thanks. We'll see how much.
So you won't be here on the twenty third? We should change the date.
No fancy desserts then? Okay.
Kim would have known probably, but you you looked upstairs just to be sure there wasn't like a fan hiding around up there in the. Attic full of stuff or.
I don't think so, no, no.
Seen one up there, I think that's really just supplies of all the things.
I think it's been cleaned out a lot lately, but it's, we used to just go up and find, magically find things up there we didn't know, yeah.
I know Kim has done, in preparation for this, she's done a lot of overhaul and.
Yeah.
I will ask for the phone.
Okay, any other business, old, new, anywhere in between? Anything else we should be thinking about? All of a sudden, it's gonna be, it's, the time is just going by so fast, July, it's gonna be August, it's gonna be September, it's crazy, but.
Um, I'll see, I just got elected, I'd be the president of the Board of Abbot Hudson. Be the president of the board of applicants.
Congratulations. So.
It's not a congratulations, but. It wasn't like there was a fierce contest. For this.
Any, uh, anything new on that with upper heads?
Well, actually, what is new, um. But I was going burden.
Uh-oh.
Uh, no, this is not a not oh, um, this is, they've changed the. Uh, formula in connection with, uh, the construction funding grants.
Oh.
So all libraries are, um. Able to, if they satisfy certain criteria, get funded up to ninety percent.
All libraries, did you say?
Well, there's the catch. While it increases the, like, we were seventy five percent library, there were a couple of libraries which were ninety percent, then there were some fifty percent. So all the libraries can get up to ninety percent. What no one's really figured out is that. The pool is fixed, so that if more libraries qualify for ninety percent, there's gonna be dilution. And what's unclear is whether. This, this is the services committee. Whether the services committee will be. Evaluating the applications and deciding. How much to fund? Or whether it's an on and off switch saying someone's applying for a three hundred thousand dollar grant and will approve it. And then all of the projects they approve then get reduced. Portionate way.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not.
They're not changing the, the amount of money.
That's right, but so, but. It's gonna depend year by year, depending on what sort of projects are presented and who's asking for the money, that, not.
Is.
Who's asking for the money is important, but for example, if you have Bethlehem. Big library, you have more assets, if they're looking to spend a quarter of a million dollars or. Five hundred thousand dollars, one of the libraries literally is moving its premises from one location to the other, because otherwise it will. Those projects will consume a bigger portion of the pri- of pie, because.
That was always true.
Yes, that's, that's always true, but I'm just saying that's.
Just curious, is what, what, what was behind the change?
Cash charge change.
Well, but like, why did this?
Now you're gonna ask me why those, I just later has decided.
Never mind, never mind then.
I was challenged with the town issue, the legislature. I think they thought it was Pharaoh.
Okay, okay. There's a legislature calling. Okay.
The big projects still. Still, yeah.
But there were times, I mean, just, since I've been on the board and following it, there have been good years for the small library.
Right.
That haven't been big, big asks.
Yeah.
And there've been leaner years where basically there've been large projects, some larger libraries, and, I mean, everyone got a proportion of cut. But, you know, if someone's asking for seventy five, seven hundred million, that's knowledge.
That was always a challenge with that, cause they, they. Were weighted towards the bigger projects, and so the smaller libraries like us were trying to do bigger projects, but then you have a bigger match problem, and it's. Beyond your ability to. Pay for the match, but you're doing this thing chasing the grant, and you're, and you're adding things to projects that you don't necessarily need, they're trying to make the numbers higher. Yeah, and you do all that work and you don't get it.
Is there a timing? Aspect to it, if you, um, petition earlier, do.
No, it's basically, it's a period of time within which prepare yourself and. It's interesting, I mean, it creates a probably greater opportunity to get more of your project paid for by the government. But how much more of an opportunity?
Yeah, yeah, remains to be seen.
In theory, yeah, it's sort of like, it just sort of depends on what happens.
Alright, anything else? Alright, why don't we call it a night, it's eight fifteen.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
You made an actual motion too. A second, alright, I'm in favor.
I made all these motions, I'd like to.